So help us God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Did you wish to address the board this evening, Mayor?
Yes, Madam President. Well, I want to welcome everyone to the 112th Board of Aldermen, the 112th city government. We just had our inauguration. Seems the snow doesn't want us to get together because we got the inauguration canceled on Sunday, and now it's snowing outside again. But I want to congratulate you, Madam Chair, Madam President, on your reelection and Alderman-at-large O'Brien for his as president and vice president of the Board of Aldermen. I look forward to working with all of you, working together as we have for years in the past. I think we've done a good job of treating each other with respect and kindness, even when there is a disagreement, which often there is not. On the agenda, I did want to mention one thing, the communication from Doria Brown, Energy Manager, which sets forth the new Community Power Electric Rate, which is 8.1 cents per kilowatt for the basic rate. For those who want a higher than 24% proportion of green energy, the prices go up from there. But again, we are undercutting Eversource, and I really think Community Power, which is an organization of Nashua and several other communities, buying power for our residents, our customers, has actually made Eversource more competitive in terms of trying to get the electric rates as low as possible. Anyway, I want to thank Doria and the New Hampshire Power, Community Power Coalition for working on this. We have also developed a significant reserve fund that ultimately will come to Nashua of several million dollars, and we have saved Nashua customers over $3 million so far. But with that, Madam President, I just want to reiterate that I look forward to working with you and the other members of the board again. I know we are trying to, and we will build for our great community, a healthy and prosperous future for Nashua and for generations to come. So it's just an honor to be with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of Mayor. Seeing none. Presentation, I will, tonight I'm going to recognize Deb Chisholm, the Sustainability Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager. I'm just here to give a quick introduction to the others who are doing all the work for the Sustainability Department. As Mayor Donchis has just revealed, the new power rates for Community Power Coalition have been revealed. Doria is going to give you a little bit of an update on that. And I've also got Levent here, newest member of Sustainability Department. He's going to give you a quick summary on where we're at with the Sustainability Plan, which is something that came about several months ago with the recommendations from the Environment and Energy Committee, one of which was to develop a sustainability plan. So we are right now up to our eyeballs in pulling that together, and Levent's going to give you a little update on that. So I'm going to introduce to you Doria Brown, who is the city's Energy Manager. She's here via Zoom, of course, being the safe one and not having to drive in and drive home later. So I'm just going to leave it here. And if you have questions about any of this, feel free to ask as we're going through this. And also feel free to reach out anytime. Donna has our contact information if you have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to do a quick overview on the Community Power Rates. I know Mayor Donchis just went over them, but I do want to get a little bit more detailed. So we were able to get a default rate of 8.1 cents per kilowatt hour, which will start on the first year read in February and will be up in the first meter read of July. If you want to opt up to different rates, you can opt up for 33% for new energy content at 8.4 cents, 50% at 9.4 cents, and 100% at 12.4 cents. And then we also are offering variable rates for large users. I'm not going to go over every single rate in the spreadsheet, but I just wanted to share them with the Board of Aldermen. There's a little bit more fluctuation here with the Granite Basic, our default rate, at 12.4 cents in February, but it trends down in March to 8.3 cents, April 6.5, May 6.2, and June 6.5, July 7.9. As you can see, we continue to be able to offer rates below the utility in both our variable rates and in our basic residential rate. I do want to point out that the Eversource rate is very low this time around as well, which is super exciting. It's at 8.2 cents a kilowatt hour. And the reason it is so low this time around is because I believe Eversource had overcharge, I think, in the last billing cycle, and they are redistributing that overcharge into this billing cycle. So I don't know what their rates are going to be next time around for the August to February, August 24 to February 25 timeframe, but I'm interested to see what those look like and what we're able to come up with for Nashua Community Power along with CBCNH. I'm going to hand it over to Levent now if there are any questions.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm Levent Akinchi, and I'm a Sustainability Planner in Community Development's Sustainability Department. So today I'm here to inform all of you a little bit about the Livable Nashua Plan, which is a plan that the Sustainability Department has partnered with the Office of Emergency Management to produce. So in presenting this plan to you tonight, I'll give you a little bit of an overview of its purpose, what it will encompass, the timeline for completing the plan, as well as a couple little next steps. So let's see if this works. Point it towards Donna.
I think lower.
Lower? There we go. Okay. So firstly, I just wanted to read out what you're seeing on the slide right there. The Livable Nashua Plan is the city's roadmap to a livable, resilient, and sustainable future for everyone. To meet the long-term goals of the city's Imagine Nashua Master Plan, Livable Nashua defines the short-term actions that the city will take to meet the challenges of climate change head-on and create a thriving community. So in essence, this is our Sustainability Plan. And by creating this plan, we're fulfilling the resolution goal to create such a plan by 2024, which was adopted by the Board of Aldermen last year. But as stated here, this plan is going to lay out the concrete, trackable actions that the city will take in the short term to achieve the sustainability-related goals in the Imagine Nashua Master Plan. So in doing so, this plan will help us both mitigate and adapt to the effects of climate change that we are already experiencing here. We did see some pretty significant flooding and, of course, poor air quality events last year. Now, something we need to be clear about is that the Livable Nashua Plan is going to be a municipal-scale implementation plan, which means we are focusing on actions that the city has direct control over. And thus, this plan is going to have the greatest impact on the way that the city operates as we move forward. However, there are many actions that the city can take that could have implications for the wider community as well, which is why we have really prioritized community engagement as part of the plan's development process. So we really want to be sure that the community is on board with this and that the plan is reflective of our entire community's desires. The other key point is the short-term aspect of this plan. Excuse me. So we want to make sure that the actions established in this plan are achievable in the short term. And for this plan, that really means achievable within about five years ideally. But in some cases, depending on the specific actions, we could be looking out maybe as far as 10 years in some cases. It will all depend on what those final actions end up being. And then to put that into slightly better context, in comparison with the Imagine Nashua Master Plan, so one of the sustainability-related goals from Imagine Nashua is to achieve citywide carbon-neutral electricity by 2050. So for this plan, the Livable Nashua Plan, we would take that and look at actions that we can take now and perhaps into the next five to 10 years to get us closer to achieving that goal. So for example, actions could include something like prioritizing solar installations and battery storage on city-owned parking lots and garages, where feasible, of course, increasing the Community Power Program's reserve funds to invest in local renewable energy projects, or updating land use codes to permit rooftop solar energy systems by right in certain zoning districts. So none of these examples are going to directly achieve the goal that I mentioned from Imagine Nashua, but they are stepping stones that get us closer in the short term and set us up for achieving that 2050 goal on time. Moreover, with a short-term outlook for this plan, the idea will be to update the plan probably every five years or so as we accomplish the established actions, which will ensure that we continue the momentum towards the sustainability goals that were established in the Imagine Nashua Master Plan. There we go. Now, for this plan, we will be organizing the actions into five focus areas, which are listed here on the slide. They are clean energy and efficient buildings, resilient and healthy communities, smart waste and water management, sustainable transportation and land use, and thriving natural resources. These were all identified as focus areas after completing a baseline assessment as well to kind of see where the city stands currently in terms of sustainability. And in terms of timeline, you'll see here that we started the process back in July last year with data collection and the baseline assessment that I mentioned, while we have set a tentative completed-plan release for April of this year. Also, looking at this timeline, you'll see that we are currently at the tail end of the action planning stage. So we've really been spending the last several months consulting with representatives from all departments in the city to develop the actions for the plan. And we've taken those actions to the Environment and Energy Committee, as well as the Conservation Committee for review. And we've also been gathering input from the public. So in terms of the public input, we've been sending out surveys. We set up a booth at the Holiday Stroll. We conducted focus groups at both Nashua High Schools and also with organizations such as Central Latino, as well as many other activities as well. And now we're kind of in the process of evaluating all of that input, trying to see how we can best establish or best adapt the goals that we've been creating to meet all of the desires of everyone who's provided input thus far. And as far as next steps, there we go. We will be presenting this plan to the board again as soon as it is completed and ready, likely by April. And we're looking for continued support from all of you as we work to complete it and as we work to implement the established actions in the future, too. In the meanwhile, if you have not done so already and would like to provide some input for the actions going into this plan, there is one more opportunity to do so during the Environment and Energy Committee meeting on January 18, where the actions under the Clean Energy and Efficient Buildings focus area will be discussed. And then if anyone has any questions right now, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just want to comment, and I also want to thank the newly formed Sustainability Plan for their work on this. You've done a ton of due diligence to really bring this forward and make sure it's vetted. And I know that the approach that we've been taking with the committee is also looking at how we can really localize our approach to climate change. What can we control? And I think that's really effective as our first step here. And I also just wanted to just brag a little bit about the work that we're doing in the city. We have the first Energy Manager. We have an incredible, with the EE goals that we suggested, and we're leading the way in Community Power. So I'm grateful for the work that we're doing, and I know that the board will get to get in and hear a lot more about what we're doing with the Sustainability Plan. But come to our meeting on the 18th and tell us more if you'd like.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings.
None.
Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Julian Long, Urban Programs Manager, regarding Community Development Block Grant CARES Act, Round One Funding Reallocation. Communication has been received from Doria Brown, Energy Manager, regarding Nashua Community Power Spring 2024 Rate Changes.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award Seda Systems, Inc.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve a three-year contract to upgrade our backup cloud-based information sharing and storage systems for Google Workspace Software Subscription Service with Seda Systems Incorporated in the amount of $8,100, total $2,700 per year. Funding will be through Department 156 Emergency Management Fund, 55620 Software Subscription Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award ClearGov.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve a three-year budget software subscription with ClearGov in the amount of $29,760, $29,760 first-year cost, including a one-time onboarding fee of $5,400, $24,360 subject to 3% increase for years two and three. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Department, Fund 55620 Software Subscription Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Len Fornier, Superintendent Woodlawn Pine Wood Cemeteries, regarding joint convention to nominate Mark W. Plamondon as trustee.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Woodlawn Pine Wood Cemeteries for Wednesday, January 24, 2024, 7:30 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. Petitions.
Petition for street discontinuance, Mar Lane.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition for street discontinuance referred to the Committee on Infrastructure of the Nashua City Planning Board and schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, February 28, 2024, at 7 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Animal and Dog Park Advisory, Kathy Abel, reappearance, term to expire October 31, 2026, 41 Manchester Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Downtown Improvement Committee, Fauud Mafaz, new appointment, term to expire November 2, 2026, 227 Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Historic District Commission, Lisa Law, new appointment, term to expire January 31, 2027, 78 Concord Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee, Thomas Sellen, new appointment, term to expire December 31, 2027, 5 Wakefield Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees.
None.
Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
None.
Unfinished business ordinances.
None.
New business resolutions.
First reading of R-24-001 relative to the acceptance of $26,800 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity, 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program Active Threat Training.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Govea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-24-002 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $547,326.33 of fiscal year 2024 unanticipated revenue into Fund Number 1001 Capital Improvements to Department 160 Public Works Administration and Engineering.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, January 22, 2024, at 7 p.m.
First reading of R-24-003, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2025 to reallocate Round One CDVG-CV funding under the 2020 CARES Act.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
None.
Period for general public comment. No one signed up. Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank DPW for over the weekend. The snowstorm was very terrible. And as you could see outside, not so great right now, but I'm told it's going to turn to rain. But I'll use this as an opportune moment to remind the mayor to, you know, add extra people to the Streets Department to snow and plow for the next fiscal budget, and to tell my fiscal conservative Alderman, looking at Alderman from Ward Five and Alderman from Ward Two, to not stand in the way. Give him DPW more shovels. Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, on the note of the weather and the blizzards we've been facing and everything, not everybody has a place to go. We know there's a lot of unsheltered people in Nashua tonight. We estimate around 20 different campsites around the city. On January 26, the Continuum Care will be doing its point-in-time count. They'll be coordinating all the different nonprofit organizations, all the different first responders, and they'll be organizing outreach groups to go and try to at least take a general census of who's out there, what their status is, and hopefully be able to identify solutions for them. The emergency overflow capacity of the soup kitchen has been regularly reported as at capacity. And that was the extra overflow we talked about in December, I guess, that was going to solve the situation. And there's a lot of people who there still isn't space for and still need support. Something to keep in mind as we look at our budgetary priorities and our economic development and community development priorities over the next two years is, are we making sure that we're taking care of the people living in Nashua today as opposed to planning for the people that we want to attract for different reasons tomorrow? Thank you. Oh, and also, sorry, I almost forgot. Monday, Martin Luther King Day. I was looking for where they would be observing it or celebrating it. Soul Sisters will be having a brunch if anybody would like to participate. Tickets are available on Eventbrite, or you can check it out at their location at 30 Temple Street.
I'll sit. Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly mention that by the time we next meet all together here, we will have held a presidential primary in the state of New Hampshire. I'd like to remind everybody to get out and vote. Voting does matter irrespective of what we may hear on the national news level. And to be patient with your moderators, your clerks, your selectmen, your ballot inspectors. They're facing a long day by default. Polls are open for 14 hours, and they'll be in for a long night that night. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to comment on DPW and all that they have done. I drove around Ward Three today, almost as many streets as I possibly can, because there were some complaints and some issues. I want to remind the people that in Ward Three, DPW does all the plowing, but it's not all the Streets Department that does Ward Three. Some of it is park and rec, because we have some very narrow streets and through there and so on. They do their very best. I can tell you that probably like 98% of the streets were done perfectly. There were a couple here and there that there were some issues. And DPW was out there today. Our parks and recs were out there today cleaning. This is going to, for some of those streets that didn't get quite done to the residents' expectations, this storm is going to create a little bit of havoc with a lot of slush and so on. So I just ask people to be patient. DPW is doing their best. For those in Ward Three, you can always reach out to me, and I'll do everything I can. I have no more power than probably they do, but I do have a loud voice. So please be patient is the most thing. And when the roads are this bad, stay off the streets. I could tell that some of the streets, while the emergency parking van was lifted at noontime, they were still cleaning the streets at noontime. So if you put your car out there, those streets weren't getting clean as much as we would hope they would be. So think a little common sense. Even if their van is over at noontime, don't get your cars out on the streets. Help DPW as much as you possibly can. So thank you for your time.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just want to shout out to the Inauguration Committee. Not only did they plan an inauguration, but then they had to pivot because of the snow and do a second one. I was actually really happy to be in the Performing Arts Center. It was a really nice opportunity to be in that space. And I just wanted to say congrats to all my newly sworn in colleagues.
I would like to apologize for my stage fright at the inauguration. Honestly, I felt terrible about that, but we made it. We got through it. I also want to mention that we have a new deputy police chief, who is Brian Kenny. Great guy. He's been, you know, top-notch all the way. I think he'll serve the city well as a new deputy chief. So kudos to him. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hate to say it, it's not that we're starting off on the wrong foot with the Committee of Infrastructure, but getting double bookings with the primary, other different things, trying to get items together. So one of the dates that was available was February 14. And I am not going to deny my wife the right to a nice little Valentine. So I'm sure others would appreciate that. So it looks like the 28 is...
29.
What date, Mr. Cummings?
29.
The 29th. So pencil in the 29th, and bring your boots, hike them up, because we're going to get right into it, okay? And thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. The Board of Health First Meeting is tomorrow at 12:30 in Room 208. And everybody is welcome to attend. Our new members are welcome to attend. You'll learn a lot at the health meetings because it's not just the health. You'll learn a lot at the Health Meetings, because it's not just, just the Health Department, it's the whole shebang. So I'm welcome to just come to one each and see how it goes.
You're getting yelled at by the...
You have to speak into the mic.
I'm not speaking into your mic. I think he's calling you Mike, but... Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. As of right now, PDC for January 16th doesn't have anything on the agenda, so I'll be canceling that meeting. We'll hold our next meeting next month. If there's nothing on, I'm sure we can scrounge up a few directors and do some presentations on some stuff. Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? Alderman Lopez.
Human Affairs Committee has a meeting next week. I cannot find a date, but check the website if you're interested in attending public, and Alderman, please attend as well.
Other committee announcements. Alderman Kelly.
I just want to remind everybody that the Energy and Environment Committee will be going over the Sustainability Plan on Thursday, January 28th, I'm sorry, 18th, at 6:00 PM in Room 28.
Alderman Sullivan.
Sorry, I, I missed this one. Bida meets tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock over, help me, 219?
208.
208.
Or 208. That's tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock.
Okay. I want to mention that our next meeting will be moved to the 24th due to the primary. So it was initially scheduled for the 23rd, but because that's the presidential primary, we will hold it on the 24th. It will be on a hot day. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the January 9th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be so adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:03 PM. Thank you, everyone.